Okay, it's five o'clock on June 6th. This is our, uh, the city council's working session. Uh, but before we get into that, um, there's been a lot of, uh, inquiries and questions about the status of one of our police officers' employment at the city of Barstown over the last few days. Uh, I'm not really sure why there's so much interest, but there's been a lot of rumors and inquiries and allegations going on. So I wanted to take a few minutes before this main part of our meeting starts to give you an update on Officer Mackenzie Madley's employment at the city of Barstown. First of all, Officer Madley is unemployed at the city of Barstown. He did tender his resignation, uh, on June 2nd. The resignation will be effective, uh, as of July 14th will be his final day with the city of Barstown. Officer Madley has also agreed to serve his remaining time on the Barstown Police Department as a regular police officer. So I want to take this moment to thank Officer Madley for his years of service to our city and the other agencies he served with and wishing the best of luck in the future. Also, in order to facilitate the transition and make it as seamless as possible, uh, we have appointed former Barstown Police Chief C.D. Marksberry to serve as interim captain. Uh, C.D. is currently employed on a part-time basis with the city. Uh, he has a lot of experience. As I said earlier, he's served for many years as our chief here in Barstown Police Department and has served, uh, most of his law enforcement career, uh, here on the Barstown Police Department. So this seemed like a very logical decision based on the current situation whereby our police department's not fully staffed, uh, at this time. Uh, I've been asked by some of the media if this is a restructuring of the police department. Uh, all I can say is all I'm doing is reacting to one person's resignation. Last month, Officer Brad Gillett resigned in pursuit of career in the Kentucky State Police. Uh, that decision had been made way in advance of when I was appointed, uh, as mayor. My chief, Juror, and I have been engaged in this process throughout and I've kept the council members apprised of the situation. This concludes my comments and update on this employee personnel matter. I'd ask Councilman Keller, if you would, to pass out the press releases to the media who wants them. Uh, I won't be taking any questions from the media or the public on this matter at this time. This is, uh, this is not a press conference. This is a working session. Uh, you can see in the room, there's a lot of city employees here that are interested in the budget process and as is the council. So we'll be devoting our time, uh, to the else of our agenda. So, uh, to all the media, you're welcome to stay. I don't think it'll be as interesting maybe as you might think, but you're welcome to stay for, to go through our budget process on the general fund and when we get into it. Um, I would like to take a moment though to talk about another police, uh, action that took place here in Barstown yesterday. Um, I can't thank enough and commend all the police agencies that were involved in the high-speed chase that ended out on 150 and Potter Shop Road yesterday morning. Professionalism and the courage of every officer involved from Kentucky State Police, Louisville Metro, Nelson County Sheriff's Department, and certainly our own Barstown Police Department was tremendous. And their professionalism and courage prevented, uh, innocent people as well as many law officers being injured or worse because of the accident of the individual yesterday. So, uh, I can't say enough about the professionalism and, uh, the work that all the, uh, police agencies did and the other emergency services that were involved. We are very grateful to everyone, especially the one that signaled out, uh, our police officer Jeremy Colley and his K-9 unit. Uh, they were able to locate the suspect and again, that played a major role in, uh, people not being injured or worse with what was going on. And also want to mention too, the Nelson County Deputy Sheriff's that were, uh, had a major involvement, that should be Mike Clark and Brandon, Brandon Bryant. So, Chief, I'll put send my, uh, gratefulness and thanks to everyone at all. Thanks. All right. And so, uh, yeah.
Lucas, can you come on up here please? Okay. First of all, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Uh, this is Lucas Petit. Uh, I'll give him, um, why don't you turn around the other way and face everybody? Give him, uh, an opportunity to tell everybody why he's here.
I'm Lucas Petit. I'm a recent graduate from Barstown High School. I have earned my Eagle Scout. It is the highest rank of honor in the Boy Scouts of America. It's a really hard and leadership-intensive role. And I've learned that 13 years of scouting, it's pretty good to have. And my project that I have done to accomplish this was helping out the community by building some adder-on deck chairs for Bernheim. Um, along with other Eagle Scouts that have done many other projects there. Bernheim is a wonderful place. They all help us out. You can call up there and they'll let you know. Um, it's really kind of a hard thing to get.
And, uh, what do you plan to do next year?
I plan to attend Russia in Owensburg. It's a university where I plan to study engineering and pre-medical.
Lucas, a good way. Just a moment, I've got a pen. I'd like to get it. I'd like to ask the other council members to draw, would we like to take a picture with them? This is, uh... Lucas, this is the city of Barstown head. I see you've got quite a few decorations. I'm not sure this is as hard-earned as, as the other ones were, but, uh, I too was a member of 147 and I can tell you, I never did come close to being an Eagle Scout. So I commend you for that hard work that you've done. So, thank you very much. Thank you. We're really proud of you and keep us good work and all the best in your future.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're gonna go back up to the start of the agenda. Um, first of all, I think it's the KECO online auction bid for the salt bid. Jessica, is that your, uh, do I cover the KECO salt bid?
Yes. We, the last couple of years, we have participated along with the KECO, Kentucky Association of Counties, Kentucky League of Cities has been invited to also participate in an online auction for our annual salt bidding rather than having each community go through that bidding process separately and individually. So, the, uh, Kentucky Association of Counties kind of administers this online and this, what you have in your pocket is the bid result from that online auction. And Y-E-C-L-L-C was the low bidder for Barstown, uh, the Barstown supply for salt for this year at $53.50 a ton. So I'd like to ask that the council recommend approving them as our low bidder and then choose that bid for our salt.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Now, the motion that approved the low bid, Y-E-C-L-L-C for our salt for the coming year to Barstown.
I'll make that motion and also add that it's $53.50 per ton? Per ton, yes.
And the motion and a second. A second, a second with Councilman Sheikels. Is there any discussion?
Did you put stolen on this here?
No, we really didn't. We don't really anticipate that we're going to need much salt. Our volume is currently full, but unable to predict winners. We need to have a, a low bid on record so that if we need to purchase additional this coming winter, uh, we have someone to work it.
Okay. The end of discussion. If not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay. Motion carried. Jessica. Now, I think you have, uh, the next item is the water treatment flat project and the KIA loan. Uh, we have a resolution that we need to approve. I guess by the mayor to sign off on behalf of the city. If you'd like to explain that just a little bit.
Yes, we've already gone through that, uh, KIA loan process and the KIA board approved our loan amount and our contract extension. We've already had that through with the council. This is just the executing documents so that we can enter into the actual loan agreement. So this resolution allows the mayor to sign all the paperwork and organizations to kind of enter in and execute that loan agreement.
This is resolution R. 2017-04. There you go.
I'll read it if you don't mind, Mayor. Uh, resolution R. 2017-04, resolution of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, approving and authorizing an assistance agreement between the city of Barstown, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority. Whereas the city council, governing authority of city of Barstown, Kentucky governmental agency, has previously determined that it is in the public's interest to acquire certain facilities and improvements to the government agency's water system, the project. And whereas the governmental, uh, agency has made application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, the authority, for the purpose of providing monies to construct the project. And whereas in order to obtain such monies, the governmental agency is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority now therefore be it resolved by the city of Barstown as follows. Section one, that the governing authority hereby authorizes, approves and authorizes the form on file with the government agency for the purpose of providing the necessary financing to the governmental agency for the projects. Section two, that any officer of the governmental agency being hereby authorized directed and empowered to execute necessary documents or agreements and otherwise act on behalf of the governmental agency to effect such financing. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Uh, we have a motion now to approve resolution R. 2017-04. A motion by Councilman Buckley. A second by Councilman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Okay, and then we also have with this is an assistance agreement. Uh, I touch base on that.
That's basically the agreement that this resolution allows the mayor to sign, the actual agreement entering into that one. So that was just a supplemental document. You asked to see what we would be entering into.
The long?
Yes, the long agreement itself.
Is there no approval of this there? You've, um, empowered by resolution, the mayor to sign that agreement?
So, uh, I didn't want you to have to read that. That's seven. Okay. All right. Let me read it. Let's see. Uh, I don't have anything, uh, else to report under the mayor's report other than the comments I made at the start of the meeting. Um, I would say, uh, we've, uh, been working diligently over the last month. Tracy Hudson and I are getting the budget prepared. Uh, also invited, uh, the department has each department to come in and sit and go line by line over the budget. Uh, although I have, uh, gotten my letter introducing the budget this year, uh, but uh, if there's anything on the administrative, we'll go ahead with that. Okay. Oh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, any council had any other comments to raise before the meeting tonight before we get into the budget session? Sorry, I'll, uh, uh... Okay. All right. We move into the budget work session part of this. Um, we're gonna, tonight, we're just gonna address the, uh, general fund. Uh, so, uh, I think we have all the department heads. We'll start with the, I guess, administration. That would be, if you're looking at the bottom of your thing, it looks like pages two or forty-one. As I said earlier, I've been through this about five times with Tracy and, geez, I'm tired of me asking her questions. But, uh, does any of the council have any, uh, questions on the administration? And also there's a detailed sheet for each department that spells out a little bit more in detail, uh, what some of these line items are.
I'd say a quick question on, uh, on other expenses, page one-twenty. Uh, there's a pretty good jump in the, in the salaries there. Was that, uh, was that, do we pick off, do we hire somebody else or had somebody else do it?
There's a replacement.
For the groundskeeper?
I thought you were saying one bunch.
Is he around, sir?
Tell us. Some extra help since he's, uh, not only doing the groundskeeping, but also COBAC and maintenance.
Phillip's taken on a lot more duties as far as maintenance throughout the city. He's not only doing groundskeeping, which is his title, but he's also doing maintenance through all the other departments. Uh, he's going over roofs with the departments and he's mainly taking, he's completely taken over the COBAC maintenance, the city hall maintenance, and helping everybody else. So, I, we're trying to get some help for him so that we can take on some additional duties downtown as well.
Okay, so you're gonna put, you're gonna put his salary in, for his facilities, in administration instead of, uh, splitting like it was before, before, it's, it's kind of split between two or three different departments. So is that the reason?
His, uh, Phillip's salary is in administration now totally and so with this new groundskeeper.
That was this question. I know before, it's been a couple of years ago, but his pay was kind of split into different departments. But if you're putting all in administration, that makes sense.
He'll also have some responsibilities at the cemetery.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Phillip. I'm sorry. No, I just, I just knew how it has, uh, that was split up before, but it's all now in administration. That makes sense. Okay.
So he'll also be giving some much-needed help to Main Street too?
I've met with Councilman Buckman and the Santa Barbara of Main Street already and told them that I want, that we want to help them with all their duties that they need. Uh, they'll email me or Phillip that we will help them as much as we can. And this, this new groundskeeper would be dedicated to downtown whenever they need the watering, the planting, the things, uh, all the things that they've asked us to help do. Yeah.
That's obviously an important part of our city.
I agree with, I agree with Hunter.
Yes, sir.
Tracy, uh, how do we determine the indirect cost allocation? How, is that a form over there or how's that, I'm just curious?
It's a, it's a based on a need at the moment, uh, with the, what the admin and finance need in order to balance the budget. It's based in the percentage comes from the revenues that each of the departments makes. So it equals a hundred percent, whereas the more revenue you have, the more you're gonna have to spend in indirect costs. So each department pays it.
So it's a fixed percentage across the board for any department?
Just a couple of things. Admin, under seventy-sixty on the buildings, that's ten thousand dollars. That's to repair to the farmer's market roof. And it's being offset by a transfer from our land acquisition fund and we'll have to try to repay that back over time. I think that correct, Tracy?
Which one's the administration?
Under seventy-sixty on the buildings, that's ten thousand.
That's the roof?
That's to repair the roof and the money will come from the land acquisition fund, the building fund. And then, uh, one other item that Tracy and I have talked about, we haven't, we need to take a change on, we think there's a lot of savings that could be made with housekeeping and city hall and cleaning services that we're doing. We think we could possibly bring that in-house. There's, we've got a, a few, uh, part-time people that might want to take on that, uh, work. And, uh, I think right now we're paying close to twenty thousand dollars a year for that. We think there's a lot of saving to be had, either figuring to clean it out or suddenly it out to a part-time employee for much cheaper than we're paying now. So, uh, we might look to that as a, when it saves, you know, possibly as much as ten thousand dollars this coming year.
I saw agricultural supplies go over. Uh, was that the mosquito program?
It is. Um, currently we still have a tank left and I didn't even have one until a couple of years ago. But right now it's budgeting for two tanks and it just really depends on how aggressive we want to be next year.
Five sixty-one hundred, insurance preservation expenses. Is that like part of, part of the Rishayi comes under?
No. Uh, H-R-B, Rishayi is here too, getting questions. Uh, she gets a grant for the CLG. Fourteen thousand is what she's anticipating. She's anticipating fourteen, of course, it's fourteen thousand in expenditures for all of her workshops, but she's also asking for an additional five thousand to keep the archive in, which I've set a copy on everybody's, by everybody's seat to look at.
Any other questions on admin, department?
Mayor, you had mentioned, uh, the roof for the farmer's market being one of those expenses of seven, seven thousand or seventy-sixty. Uh, I was just talking to Rishayi before the meeting and was curious. She had forty-four buildings in the historic district that were damaged by this recent hailstorm. Has there been any of that, any, any city roofs that we know of that are city property that are gonna have to be addressed?
I can answer that. Um, we, no, we haven't had any problems with the roofs. Uh, we had Swift Roofing, Roofing go out with Phillip and assess all of the sewer roofs on all the sewer plants and public works and there hasn't been any substantial damage as far as, hey.
So this one, this one in particular has nothing to do with any storm damage as far as farmer's market? That's, that's normal?
No, sir. The farmer's market's leaking. The bathroom, uh, somewhere on that wall on, that's facing the roof, there's water coming in. I think it's coming in from that cap all the way up the top and it's leaking into both the men's and women's bathrooms. And I, we had a hole in the women's bathroom almost all winter trying to ascertain where that leak was coming from and could not. So, uh, that ten thousand is for them to pressure wash the backside of that, seal it, and then seal the cap all the way up top to try to stop that leak. Swift Roofing is.
You know that both the man and women's restroom's are looking out at the farmer's market somewhere here. I think, uh, women's might not be in order.
It, it's working. It was, it was working here at that time too. I, I don't, I know that we've had some problems with, uh, people staying in on, out of the cold, but they're being locked at night now and then opened in the morning and, uh, they've both been, been working orders since early, early year. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on the admin, department budget? If not, uh, if we bend the lease, uh, that would be pages four or forty-one.
Uh, Mayor, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, I've already talked to Tracy, so, uh, I really know some of my answers. Uh, just thought I'd bring them out in a, a general meeting so the public would know. The admin assistant, department position, uh, what would that person's responsibilities be?
Uh, they, we are right now staffed with two civilian, uh, civilian employees. Uh, one is at the front desk and, and records, the other one in the property room. Uh, the admin assistants will be cross-trained on both of them, so that assistant could take over in the case of, uh, off days, uh, or vacations.
Okay. Uh, can I keep going, Tracy? Okay. Uh, patrol car. I think last year we purchased four?
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, yes.
How, charger, and I forgot the two.
Uh, the other two were Ford Explorers.
Ford, Ford, okay. So I'm assuming that, uh, this two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, these are SUVs?
Yes, sir. They're the Ford Explorers. That's what we're gonna go to specifically.
Okay. This, in a way of an explanation why Explorers are opposed to cars?
Um, actually, they're the same price for either the cars or the Explorers. The Explorers give more room. Uh, they're a four-wheel drive. Um, yeah, in inclement weather, they're easier to handle. Uh, you don't want to be in my police car any sooner.
Okay. Okay. Well, you have me at the same price, so.
Gotcha.
Are we selling a lot of stuff, selling surplus cars? See, you got it.
I'm sorry, sir.
On the, in the budget, were there surplus, sale of surplus property?
Yes, sir, we are. We have, uh, currently, we have four cars, uh, on bid right now that hopefully will be sold by July first. And we have between six and eight other vehicles to sell after the fiscal year starts. And, uh, I think there's one, one change I think we did this year, Chief, with, uh, gone to an allowance on uniforms, I believe. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Uh, we've been, in the past, we've been, uh, the allowance has been four hundred dollars per officer. They would go out five uniforms, uh, then turn in receipts to the city. It creates a traffic jam both within my administration and within finance on trying to follow the individual officers and what they're buying to account for the four hundred dollars. What we would like to do is pay them six hundred dollars in a lump sum on their check at the beginning of the fiscal year. That way, uh, the taxes and, and any other efforts that come out of that money will equal around four hundred dollars and they're responsible to buy their uniforms themselves out of that four hundred dollars throughout the year.
How does that affect retirement? They're getting that in the form of their...
Well, either way, it's gonna affect retirement. I mean, they're still getting compensated either way. Tracy, I think you know who paid the admin of the comfortable salary?
I am. It's actually not gonna affect retirement if they, when you give reimbursement for your uniforms, it goes onto W-2 at the end of the year, so it's considered a, a benefit.
It doesn't in any way adversely affect their, their income by getting it in a lump, lump sum?
It increases it, but then taxes are taken out of it. And so, at the end of the year, it'll show wages and it'll show wages effects and that'll be the higher than that.
Chief, I'll, uh, I know we talked about the, under the travel and, uh, lodging, the national, the increase to cover the national police week, which we've been sending officers ever since. Yes, sir. Um, we had to go through the processes last year to budget two officers going to Washington D.C. and I believe we came in under budget. Uh, so instead of having to go through that same routine and get a, an addendum on, on the budget each year, I've included in the travel for this year, uh, specifically to go to the, uh, law enforcement weekend, Washington D.C. Now, the officers, are they paid by their own, uh, alone, have they paid? Have they been going on their own, sir? Okay. Anyone else have any other question on the police department, Chief, Tracy? Is, uh, going to recreation, it looks like page six of forty-one, stop there.
Hey, Councilman?
Yes?
Uh, Daniel, um, I thought I saw you here. Yes, sir, okay. Um, this, this third maintenance position, this isn't actually new. This is just to get us back where we were before.
Yes.
Before we were...
And then, one other item that Tracy and I have talked about, we haven't really taken a change on it. We think there's a lot of savings that could be made with housekeeping at City Hall, cleaning services that we're doing. We think we could possibly bring that in-house. There's, we've got a few part-time people that might want to take on that work. And I think right now, we're paying close to $20,000 a year for that. We think there's a lot of saving to be had, either if we were to clean it out, or suddenly add to the part-time employee for much cheaper than we're paying now. So, we might look to that as a way to save, you know, possibly as much as $10,000 this coming year.
I saw agricultural supplies go over. Was that the mosquito program?
It is. Currently, we still have a tank left, and I didn't even have one until a couple of weeks ago. But, right now, it's budgeting for two tanks, and it just really depends on how aggressive we want to be next year.
I have a 6100, insurance preservation expenses. Is that like part of, part of the RSHI we come down to?
No. HRB Rochay is here too, getting questions. She gets a grant for the CLG, $14,000 is what she's anticipating. She's anticipating fourteen, of course, it's $14,000 in expenditures for all of her workshops, but she's also asking for an additional $5,000 to keep the archive room, which I've set a copy on everybody's, by everybody's seat. Look at it.
Mayor, you had mentioned the roof for the farmer's market being one of those expenses of seven, $7,000 or $70,600. I was just talking to Rochay before the meeting, and was curious. She had forty-four buildings in the historic district that were damaged by this recent hailstorm. Has there been any of that, any, any city roofs that we know of that are city property that are going to have to be addressed?
I can answer that. We, no, we haven't had any problems with the roofs. We had Swift Roofing go out with Philip and assess all of the sewer roofs on all the sewer plants and public works, and there hasn't been any substantial damage as far as hail.
So, this one, this one in particular, has nothing to do with any storm damage as far as farmer's market? That's, that's normal?
No, sir. The farmer's market's leaking. The bathroom, somewhere on that wall that's facing the roof, there's water coming in. I think it's coming in from that cap all the way up the top. And it's leaking into both the men's and women's bathrooms. And I, we had a hole in the women's bathroom almost all winter, trying to ascertain where that leak was coming from, and could not. So, that $10,000 is for them to pressure wash the backside of that, seal it, and then seal the cap all the way up the top to try to stop that leak. Swift Roofing.
You know that both the men and women's restrooms are leaking out at the farmer's market some of the year. I think that women's might not be in order.
It, it's working. It was, it was working at that time, too. I, I know that we've had some problems with people staying in and out of the cold, but they're being locked at night now and then opened in the morning. And they've both been in working order since early, early year. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on the admin part of the budget? If not, it would be meant to lease. That would be pages four of 41.
Mayor, a couple of questions.
Sure.
I've already talked to Tracy, so I really know some of my answers. Just thought I'd bring them out in a general meeting, so the public would know. The admin assistant, department position, what would that person's responsibilities be?
Chief, I'll give you that. We are right now staffed with two civilian, civilian employees. One is at the front desk, and he references the other one in the property room. The admin assistants will be cross-trained on both of them, so that assistant could take over in the case of off days or vacations.
Okay. Can I keep going, Tracy? Okay. Patrol car. I think last year, we purchased four?
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, yes.
How charger, and I forgot the two.
The other two were Ford Explorers.
Ford Explorers, okay. So, I'm assuming that this $220,000, these are SUVs?
Yes, sir. They're the Ford Explorers. That's what we're going to go to specifically.
Okay. This, in a way of an explanation why Explorers are opposed to cars?
Actually, they're the same price for either the cars or the Explorers. The Explorers give more room. They're a four-wheel drive. In inclement weather, they're easier to handle. You don't want to be in my police car anymore.
Well, you have me at the same price, so.
Gotcha.
Are we selling a lot of stuff, selling surplus cars? See, you got it.
I'm sorry, sir.
On the, in the budget, were there surplus, sale of surplus property?
Yes, sir, we are. We have, currently, we have four cars on bid right now that hopefully will be sold by July first, and we have between six and eight other vehicles to sell after the fiscal year starts.
And I think there's one, one change I think we did this year, Chief, with gone to an allowance on uniforms, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We've been, in the past, we've been, the allowance has been $400 per officer. They would go out and buy the uniforms, then turn in receipts to the city. It creates a traffic jam, both within my administration and within finance, on trying to follow the individual officers and what they're buying to account for the $400. What we would like to do is pay them $600 in a lump sum on their check at the beginning of the fiscal year. That way, the taxes and any other benefits that come out of that money will equal around $400, and they're responsible to buy their uniforms themselves out of that $400 throughout the year.
How does that affect retirement? They're getting that in the form of their.
Well, either way, it's going to affect retirement. I mean, they're still getting compensated either way.
Tracy, I think you know who paid the admin as comfortable as that?
I am. It's actually not going to affect retirement. When you give reimbursement for your uniforms, it goes onto W-2 at the end of the year, so it's considered a benefit.
It doesn't in any way adversely affect their, their income by getting it in a lump sum?
It increases it, but then taxes are taken out of it. And so, at the end of the year, it'll show wages, and it'll show wages effects, and that'll be the higher than that.
Chief, I know we talked about the under the travel and lodging, the national, the increase to cover the National Police League, which we've been sending officers ever since.
Yes, sir. We had to go through the processes last year to budget two officers going to Washington DC, and I believe we came in under budget. So, instead of having to go through that same routine and get an addendum on, on the budget each year, I've included in the travel for this year, specifically to go to the law enforcement weekend, Washington DC.
Now, the officers, are they paid by their own, alone, or have the pays?
They've been going on their own, sir.
Anyone else have any other question on the police department? Chief, Tracy? Going to recreation, it looks like page six of 41, stop there.
Hey, I have a question. Daniel, I thought I saw you here. Yes, sir, okay. This, this third maintenance position, this isn't actually new. This is just to get us back where we were before?
Yes.
Before we had that cut, we had someone retired.
Charlie Harden retired last March, year ago March. We never filled that position. Looking to get that back, so we need to stay out.
Okay, and if I can't make?
Sure.
Okay. Can you explain to everyone about the receptionist, the need for the receptionist?
Receptionist, what we're looking for right now, between me and Assistant Director Stephen, we're trying to fill the office while we're doing our other duties, so we're kind of offsetting each other or whatnot. And it does tie our hands, having to stay in the office, can't do what you need to do. We've gotten a lot bigger over the years, and now we've got a lot of park rentals, we've got registration for leagues and pool activities and different things, and it has to be manned the whole time. At the same time, they're actually mowing the gym during gym hour, so it's two positions in one to a point, but just to be more effective in all of our jobs.
Right in here, pretty soon, you'll be taking on additional responsibility with the opening of that facility over there, too. So, you'll be kind of torn between several places.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, where Stephen's going to the pool, and we've been, we're still training him to a point. He knows the gist of it, but I'm working with him on the intricacies of it. You know, so we're both kind of going back and forth, and I can't pull George in or anybody else in to watch the office at times, so it's been a real struggle, trying to cover that as well, because they don't have the time to give from their normal duties, since we're down a maintenance person as well.
Daniel, would you like to speak on the college programs at community park, and then also task force?
To start with, community park, what I'm looking at doing is wanting to get the, half the parking lot paved, basically. Sounds like the entire parking lot, we're paving the left half of the parking lot. At the end of the parking lot, we're actually going to put in a full-court basketball court, but we don't even have an existing half-court right now. And then, that'll make it easier, more accessible, and parking will be a lot easier layout with concerts and everything that we've got going down there. People are parking every which way, and we can't get enough people in there. First concert we had there, parking hard, you could walk and hit to the park, because everybody was everywhere, and we were making more seamless pulling everybody in. In addition to that, I want to put a new pavilion near the basketball court, where the horse chute pit used to be, if I remember. I'm going to put a pavilion there. The pavilion that's down there now is rented out pretty much every weekend. We get booked for both days, three days at a time over each weekend, and, you know, we definitely have a need to bring another one in. It won't be as big as that one, but it'll handle smaller parties, we're looking for the bigger parties down there. And in addition to having that second one, it will be up level with the parking lot for wheelchair accessibility and all that comes into play, because right now, people would actually have to drive their vehicles down through the park to get to that in a wheelchair, because it drops about 20, 25 feet in elevation from the parking lot. So, that would open that up to a lot more rentals. They're having to rent pavilions up here that they don't really like. They'd rather rent the one down there just because of the layout of the park, but the handicap accessibility has been the issue. And then, we want to put a bathroom facility in there with that portal that's in there forever, and we're paying, right now, we're paying $130 a month for portal that's out there. We've been paying it for years. You know, we talked to Jessica and Dick Burton. We can get water, we can get sewer lines hooked down to that. It shouldn't be an issue. We can shrug two bathrooms, men's and women's bathroom, and then it'll have a little small storage area in it as well, and it'll be up at the parking lot level, so that everybody can come in and still be accessible for wheelchairs.
On the portal, that's wheelchair accessible at this point or not?
No, there's really not much at all that's accessible with the way that parks, the elevation that parks laid out. Everybody loves this park. You know, we have a real issue just mowing grass at that park, because there's so many people there. We have to get there early in the morning and try to work around them with grass mode. So, I mean, it's, it's definitely the heaviest used park in the city. So, it's, it's a need that we've come to. Don's been asking for years and years to pave that portion of the parking lot. We've never been able to do it, but, you know, making wheelchair accessible is going to make a lot more people enjoy the park that's having issues now. There's two people I know right now that drive down to the pavilion just to access it, because they can't get their wheelchair down. And the tennis court, the Jones Avenue Tennis Court, it's like skate park. It's been about nine or 10 years since it's been sealed, and it's been over 20 since it's been surfaced, closer to 25. And usually, 20 years is about the most you're going to get out of surface. And it's got a lot of cracks, especially the court closer to the road, to Jones Avenue. And the cracks have started to actually separate and become unlevelled, which causes a huge safety issue during tennis matches. Bethel is, plays their matches up there. They've offered to help out some. They don't have a whole lot to give for it, but they've offered to help out some with it. Talked to a couple of people that are going to try to help some with it, but what we're looking, what we're looking at doing is just doing a complete renovation of it. They'll put a crush line layer down on top of what is existing, then they'll pave on top of that and seal. And with that crush line, it'll allow the bottom to still shift and not crack the play surface.
You talked about some other possibilities for that tennis court as well, some other recreational possibilities for the, I want you to work a little bit.
The layout for different activities, yes. It's currently just set up for standard tennis. When it is restructured, we're looking at doing standard tennis lines, a junior Olympic tennis line, and then a pickleball, so.
Would you explain the pickleball?
Pickleball's a, it's a up-and-coming sport, we'll call it. It's coming out mainly Florida, and they're, they're actually playing on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings right now as a group of plays. And it's kind of a combination of tennis and badminton, or table tennis. They use a bigger than ping pong paddles, but similar, and kind of like a wiffle ball, and play on a tennis net. They'll play doubles, and they really enjoy it. It's, it gets them moving, you know, and it's not as fast pace as tennis, so, you know, anybody can play that sport. They've been playing indoor, and they'd like to move to outdoor. E-Town has a lot of outdoor facilities that are more used than the tennis courts. So, if we can start that all three ways, we can look at getting USTA grants from the junior Olympic lines, and then pickleball, still have access for it, and then you can still play standard tennis as well, so.
And one thing I did talk to Daniel about on grass is that on this ADA issue of the community park, somebody might want to reach out to Congress for nothing, office, and say, okay, there might be some ADA companies available from a grant standpoint. If they are, we said we want to see if we can self-take that and get that park more ADA accessible, because if they're up in there, you can tell for sure it's, it's not for anybody that's campy or, you know, has a, has to use a wheelchair, anything like that. It's kind of, it'd be kind of dangerous getting down with that for maybe.
Yeah. It's a pretty steep drop. But, you know, the concert's going, and you get hundreds coming every Friday night to the concerts. Since we put in the stadium style last year, it's really brought a lot more people, they got a better view, and it's safer to come down, get closer to the stage on that hill, so. All those people always let us know that we're not happy with portals, but that's all we have at this point, so, you know, and it's, it's the same as the park pavilion rentals or anything else, you know. Portlets are portlets. It's what you got to have, but, you know, everybody likes to have real facilities, and that's a big, big selling point for this pavilion up here, is we do have facilities for this one on the side of the pool, so, you know, it would be wonderful to go ahead and get that taken care of. Continuing to pay money anyway for portals, we might as well just put that money toward real facilities rather than keep spending on portals.
And I think you said earlier, you've got a lot more leagues now than we had in the last few years, and that's, of course, increasing the cost for contract services for umpires, and of course, it also requires you to have people on site. You want to talk to that for some more?
Yeah, we're going to, we actually ran a first adult league that we've had in probably close to 20 years, very successful league. We had nine teams in it, no issues, everything ran great, and everybody enjoyed it, they can't wait to play again. What we're doing is to look at doing that twice a year, a spring and a fall league, which, of course, costs more in wages, but, you know, it does sustain itself to run the league, so, in the end, it's, we're making just a little bit. And then, we want to try to expand our youth programs into a younger basketball. We started five years old now with the fifth quarter basketball league. We're looking at trying to get into a program where we started maybe three or four years old, and trying to work them up to a fifth quarter program. This is another stepping stone.
The adult league was basketball?
I'm sorry?
Adult league was basketball?
Yes, it was basketball. We're trying to squeeze in as well, some sort of volleyball league, you know, to give other people options that aren't basketball team. But trying to get all this into the limited space we have is, is rough. You know, with the size of our leagues, we've got both gyms that we're running now, the Go Back Gym and the Rec Center Gym, and during January, February, March, there's no space whatsoever. We're booked seven days a week solid, both gyms. And I'm still farming out teams to go to schools to practice, because we can't give the space here.
Has there been any interest in girls playing basketball, that girls league? Or is it male dominated?
Male dominated. We offer a fifth quarter girls league that's strictly for girls, that's decently participated. It's roughly 150, 160 girls in that program. We got 330 to 350 in the boys' side. And all of our other leagues, seventh and eighth grade, our high school league, and our adult league, we've only sent those up co-in, so the girls have the option to play, because you just can't get enough to do an entire girls league, usually at the seventh, junior high and above. You just can't get enough, most of them playing for school, so.
Daniel, the additions and repairs, as you talked about, that's the, that's the transfer for the land acquisition fund?
Say it again, sorry.
The addition and repairs that you've been talking about, could you explain to us?
Yes.
That's the money we're transferring for the land acquisition fund, correct?
Yeah, with its words.
And that's mostly the improvements that you spoke to as far as the improvements to the courts and, and handicap access. Does that include the pool? I understand there's going to have to be some, it's a separate item.
It's a separate.
So, none of that comes out of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions with Daniel on recreation? Just right at the bottom, the pool there is a great one. There's only a question on recreation. Next, there's the pool budget, it's on page eight. It's pretty similar in most years on the last year, I guess, as current. This year, we had quite a few expenditures for these repairs. That was, that was about $20,000 higher this year than is normally, correct? So, as you can see, next year, it's going to go back down by about $40,000.
It'll go down. Our, our wages are still coming up, just like everybody else's. That's the only thing that I look to increase for the most part over the next few years. As far as the pool, the heart of the pool and everything is good now, but, you know, the pool is still almost 40 years old at this point. It is something we're going to have to look at in years to come, whether to continue with that, or repair it, or what we need to do with that. The structure of the pool is, is deteriorating, and we're patching, patching to make it work, but, you know, we've got, I'd say, I would estimate another 10 years on it before we really have to seriously look at whether we're in, if we need to work with this one, or find a new facility, or what we need to do.
Anybody have any other question, Daniel, on pool?
Well, on the season passes, are we comparable to other communities as far as what they charge?
We're in the ballpark, depending on the community that you're looking at. Compared to, say, E-Town or Radcliffe, we're in the ballpark. They've structured it a little differently, so their hours are a little offset compared to what we do, so they'll pay, you have two options, pay every day, or we pay once, and that's it. Our season passes are a little better than most. The family portion of our individual passes, pretty much, it's just the standard. Everybody's about the same as we are. Family beds, we're a little better than most of them.
Any other questions, Matt? Thank you, Daniel. We'll move on next to fire departments. Page 11, two boxes here. Ask any questions you all want to have. Well, I've got a question, since I didn't, I don't think I wrote a good note on your answer. One question I might have, Chief, is on part-time wages. It's still showing that they're pretty high compared to the last few years. I know we have a personnel recruiting volunteers, so, you've got, you know, your volunteer fees are kind of flat, but part-time wages are going up, staying high. I want to know what the correlation might be.
You know, when, last year, when I first came in, shortly after the separation, we were having not a whole lot of luck getting a volunteer response. So, we had a core group of part-time people, so instead of just calling them as needed, we put them on a routine schedule. Our minimum staffing is four, the part-time gives us five. And by them being on a regular schedule, they are able to plan their schedules out, because most of them work full-time for another fire department, whether it be Louisville or Radcliffe or Shepherdville, whomever. And that way, if we do have one of our personnel off on vacation, or sick leave, or whatever, we still have that fourth person as the part-permanent, part-time person, once they're permanent, somebody that's there on a, on a regular basis. We usually only bring them in at four o'clock in the evening until eight o'clock the next morning, because during the daytime, we have other administrative staff that also are firefighters as well. On the weekends, we will staff those with 24 hours at a time. You know, we, as, as the mayor said, Melissa, our machine, our recruitment coordinator, she's got a lot of applications in. We ran the background checks. We've got a set of physical exams for them, and that's all grant-covered. That will be at the expense to the city. We'll start recruit training probably in late July, early August, but they have to have 150 hours to be state-certified. And typically, based on past classes that I've done other places, as well as classes we've had here, you'll end up with about a fourth of what you start out with. So, if you start out with 12, and if you get three or four at the end of class, you consider that successful, because a lot of people don't understand the time commitment that it takes. So, that's the reason why the, the volunteer budget has decreased, or has the part-time budget has increased, is just so we have staffing available to cover fires if needed. Sunday's a prime example. We have structured Fire Sunday. We had, instead of the Sunday morning, when you think would be a good time for response, we had two volunteers respond to the station. So, if we hadn't had five on the initial attack, what turned into confining the fire to a couple of rooms, if we'd, if we hadn't had them on, then it could have probably been a total loss. And there were exposure buildings on each side.
Why don't you talk about the 17-gravy apparatus, because that's one of the major items.
Yes.
$18,000.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's on Capitol. The Federal Department of Transportation regulates compressed cylinders and all The Federal Department of Transportation regulates compressed cylinders, and our breathing apparatus was purchased in 2003. They have a shelf life of 15 years. At the end of 15 years, which will be 2018, you can't use them anymore or be in violation of DOT standards, which also would relate to OSHA standards. To get the, the breathing apparatus updated, we're looking at $6,000 to $7,000 a unit. And we actually have in service right now about 25. We have applied for a FEMA grant, but just like it, we apply for grants all the time, it's a roll of the dice whether we, they are making awards right now. We haven't got a rejection letter yet, so we're still in the hunt, so to speak. But, but once again, that's, that's a maybe, it's not a definite by any stretch of the imagination. But if we get the grant award, obviously I'll come back to counsel, let you all know that we did get the award and what the amount was and what we can do with that money, so that money wouldn't have to be expended out of city coffers. But in lieu of not getting the grant, we're still gonna have to upgrade before 2018. I think we have till mid-year next year, mid-year 2018 before they start expiring.
What we talked about was the 17 full-time firefighters right now.
Right. And we'll, right, we'll average about, you know, 15 or so with the career people that come back, we'll average that on most fires, if somebody wasn't so lucky, so.
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
The mobile training tower.
Yes.
$150,000. Don't we have a training tower?
We have a training tower, you know, out on Sterling Drive going by the, toward the other sewer plant. For its physical location is, I don't think it's using good judgment for me to send the on-duty crew all the way out there, and if they get an emergency response, it's five miles from the fire station. And so when we looked at it, we actually applied for another grant, and that grant award won't take place till August through the State Fire Commission here in Kentucky. We're pretty, pretty confident on that grant. That it's a matching grant. Where the original purchase price of that mobile tower was 170, Scott Lawson, our training officer, negotiated the builder, they hit it down to 150,000, and the fire commission said they would put up around 75,000 or 80,000 of that. But we will get, we will get total notification until probably August. So, and when I had discussions with the mayor and with Tracy, you know, if that's something that can be included in this year's budget, if it's, if we don't get the grant, for example, then I think the purchase just has to go away, because there's no way I can justify the $150,000 purchase.
What are you gonna do with the company, if you were to get the mobile, mobile tower, what would you do with the one that you built out of southern Lake?
Some of the county departments will use it from time to time, because they respond for Nelson County. But for us, and I'd be willing to take anybody out there, number one, it does, it was engineered, it was engineering set planes for it. But if you get up on the top floor of it, it's, it's got a lot of shape on it, and I'm not sure of the stability sometimes. But more importantly, I think, is having the mobile tower, the guys here on shift, we can take it to the fire station, we can set it up, they can train with it, we can take it down at the end of training and then take it back and store it where we're going to store it. But to me, that's, once again, going back to the ISO, they want every firefighter to have 18 hours per year, per man, at your training tower. So as I, as I talked to the mayor, the only way we can do that in lieu of a mobile tower is on overtime, to send guys out there on their days off on overtime, so we still have a crew back in town to respond on an emergency call. Because I just, I can't good conscience send the on-duty crew out there and then somebody on the north end has a fire or, or medical emergency or whatever, and our response time's gonna be delayed greatly. I think it's just too much of a liability issue.
Right. You know, we, we lost a lot of points on our 2013.
Yes, sir.
For training.
Training was one of the places we took a big hit.
Not a huge piece of equipment that we gotta buy or something to do it, it's not, it's not, it's expensive, some of the other things we're doing.
And the good thing about, not necessarily for, for Nelson County, but for some of the outlying departments like New Haven or Northeast Nelson, instead of them having to send their people, I, I would have no issue with them utilizing our tower at their facilities, as long as there was some sort of agreement they're responsible for any damages and so forth like that. That way, they would get the same ISO credit that we would get, because they'd be, instead of them having to send their people elsewhere, they'd be able to do it right there at their fire station. And that's one of the reasons the state's willing to fund it, because they realize it could benefit multiple departments, not just the city of Bardstown.
So you say earlier, that 18 hours, is that required or is that?
That's to get the maximum, that's to get, that's to get the maximum points. ISO on their grading schedule, they have a, a maximum point value, and let's say, for example, we only did nine hours per person, we'd get 50% of the credit for that, that one area. So they take all, as you go through the process, they start adding those points up, whether it be for hydrant testing, whether it be for drill tower reuse, whether it be for your pump tests, all the things that we're required to do under the ISO survey, if we're not doing it, they just, you just don't get the credit for it.
When will we make our next request on ISO?
My goal would be early of 2018. We want there's some certification, we're working on getting our personnel that ISO wants to see, for example, they want our officer corps to be certified at the national level, and we're working on that, we're also working, that's where the tower would help. They want all of our firefighters to be nationally certified. Right now, they're state certified, but we're not nationally certified. So if we can get that done around November timeframe, we would be able to garner those points for having those certifications as well. ISO is international, so they don't recognize state certification, they only recognize national certifications.
Going back to the breathing apparatus.
Yes, sir.
Of course, you said they were about expired, it's probably because they've gotten a grant way back in 2003.
I understand they've gotten a grant. Probably got them all at the same time, of course, if we, unless, if we don't get grants, it'd be nice to get them some way, we're, we're only doing like three or four years or something over time, but, but you need them now, I guess. We need them now, and yes, and going forward, we could look at, and we do, they will block our protective equipment, it has a shelf life of 10 years, and we can own like coats, helmets, pants. Within 10 years, we can, well, we use, we do stagger those purchases, mainly because it's different sized people come in the department, so we buy different sizes to fit that person. But to your point, yes, staggering those purchases in the future would be the smart way to do it. The only issue becomes, especially on breathing apparatus, is compatibility with your old versus the new, because they, they change the configuration every four to five years. And that's done on a national level through the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA. And they do that because they want to sell you stuff. I mean, it's what it boils down to. So like, we've had the demonstrate, vendors come in, demonstrate the newest, latest products to our guys, so they can see what's available. And what we're currently using, besides what is currently available, is light years difference. Most of it's electronic stuff. Like right now, we use a handheld thermal imaging camera, these are now mask mounted, so anything where the guy looks, he's seeing through the smoke to pick up a, an image of a person or a fire location. So it's hands-free operation that way.
It's all part of the apparatus.
And it's all part of the apparatus, right. So there's, and they, they change those standards every four to five years, and the vendors like it because they have to keep up, but it also boosts the price of, you know. Probably when we bought the ones we have now, we probably paid $2,000 or $3,000 a piece for them, and now they're almost double that, so.
Yeah, I apologize if I missed.
Sorry.
That's all right. On the 5120 salaries and wages, that's about $95,000 more in this budget than last year. Did I miss why that's there?
I know one thing, we added Melissa, our coordinator, even though we get her money reimbursed to us through FEMA, I know we have a show that, is there any of those on there, Tracy?
Honestly, I think it was just, wasn't it properly? It was a typo, I'm gonna, I'll take the blame, it was typo on my part.
Just to make a comment.
You go ahead.
On the overall, then, taking that consideration and then the possible, the grant money and so forth, it's about a half a million dollars higher than last year's budget.
Sure.
What you're asking for.
Yeah, and the largest share of that is the breathing apparatus and the, the training tower, by far.
And so much the Melissa's grant, right, is that the 184,000 on here, federal grant?
Yes.
Yeah, and what we did, we just took the 633,000, divide that over, it's a four-year grant, so we divide that over a four-year period. We probably have more costs right now in, in some ways, because she's buying a lot of things for marketing that we can go out and recruit with. Long-term, the expenses will then be a recurring expense on her salary benefits, plus any new volunteers that we bring in to buy them protective equipment, but that's all grant covered, so, yeah. And with now Tracy, they actually, which was great, they created a separate line item, which is 60/20, which now we can focus all grant expenses, so it's easier for us to track what's a true grant, grant expense versus a normal line item expense we would have on our operating budget.
Part of that, Joe, that 269 apparatus, training tower, tower's contingent, probably at least a half of it, matching grant.
Yes.
But I mean, but if they got the grant, we, if we put it in the budget, we'd be...
Yeah, it's in the budget at the full price, but it doesn't reflect a grant at this point. We're not sure on that.
Yeah.
Well, the grant is reflected in the income part of 96,000, I think, just anticipating that, right Tracy?
Four point zero.
Yeah, because we'll get, at least we'll get another 11,000 from the study as a grant on top of that grant. We get that grant every year regardless, as long as we have training requirements with the study.
Yeah, I missed that.
Yeah.
Mayor, did we get the insurance issue resolved, or was this question about Casey? If we were gonna do the resolution or whatever, did we get that?
Well, there was just been some conversation about insurance for hazardous duty departments. They currently pay a different rate than the regular departments, but it's really in the discussion stage at this point, it hasn't been put into the budget. But there was some discussion during some of the department head meetings, that we might take a look at that. But at this point, it's not been budgeted.
Well, whether it's calculated or not, that may make any difference as far as what we discussed about it, it's still, it's still gonna be in the budget according to every other department.
Well, this year it's budgeted at the current, current rate for hazardous duty, I think that their rate is 67, 65 per month, whereas the regular employees either pay 100 or $300 towards insurance. So we haven't, I haven't made a recommendation to change that at this point, but it is open to discussion. The reason that it got started, I think, years ago, was in the middle of raises, we gave the hazardous duty a discount on their insurance, so as not to have to encounter, you know, the pension liability with every dollar that raised goes to the hazardous duty. Carries about 36 cents per dollar now.
38.
Yes.
38.
So that, that decision was made back in 2005 or '06, I think.
2005 was when employees had to start paying for insurance, and in order not to mess with someone's pay, all the non-hazardous were given, depending on whether or not they took, single or family, they were given a $104 raise a month or a $300 raise a month. It's cheaper to give a non-hazardous employee a raise versus a hazardous, and at that time, it would have been double to give the fire and police the 300 and the 100, and it has not been revisited since then.
Well, the reason I, the reason I brought it up, because I know since, since that time, police and fire raised, they got comparatively like the, it's about, like everyone else at all point, in every other department. So I didn't think, I didn't think it was right for them to not pay like everybody else pays. So, because if you did the pay study and everything like that, then everything should have probably gone up to, every department should be on the same pay scale. That was, that was the question I had.
Yeah, that first time, it was because hazardous duty employees did not get a raise, so they got a, since that time, I think, each and every budget hazardous duties got the same raises that the other employees have gotten. I don't know, I would ask the question of either chief, are you aware that other fire departments or police departments that you've been with debate, pay a different rate for insurance as opposed to the other regular city employees?
Not that I've been associated with, I know other departments that have done that, not one that I've been associated with. I will speak to you though, however, in my mind, and I know I'm partial because they're firefighters, but you know, they, the base rate for a firefighter is $10 an hour. And you know, if, if you look at the overall pay scale, they're not in the upper side of it, they're at the lower side. And even a, a raise like that is gonna hit several of them, especially on the family plan, pretty hard. And I know you're all looking at fairness, but I also think that's part of the reason, for example, the state has a separate rate for hazardous duty retirement and non-hazardous duty, they recognize that, you know, the, the hazards that police and fire typically face are a little bit more serious nature. You know, y'all heard me talk before and speak to the hazards of cancer and the rates of cancer for firefighters and the fire service these days. And that's a serious concern that we have, and we're trying to mitigate that. You know, when we got back on Friday the day, they had to wash their gear, they had to take a shower. We're trying to get them decontaminated as best as possible, but they still run a greater risk of exposure to contamination at a structured fire. And my concern is their long-term impact that that could have on them. So you know, obviously, I've been advocate for not changing their insurance rates because of various reasons like that. Let's say, you know, they, they evidently years ago, you know, instead of, in lieu of a raise, that was a, a benefit, I guess, that was given. And I would hate to see that diminished, not only for them financially, but morally. I think that that, that the morale issue would be impacted as well.
Well, the fact that it was done in 2005, I would agree that the pay scales weren't the best for police or fire, but since then, over the years, and I can speak from experience over the years, that level has changed. And in being in fairness to every department in the city, whether you're a garbage chief or a chief engineer, they still have to pay the same thing too, as well as, as well as the police and fire. And the pay scale has changed over the last several years. I think this was more on oversight, on the administration's part, and a fairness issue rather than anything against the police or fire. But if you're in the overall big picture of the thing, I think it should be fair for every department to be on the same pay scale as far as, because that's the budget that you set for, for the fire department, whatever the insurance is, is whatever the insurance is. Whether each individual pays that amount has no effect upon this budget. But in all fairness, from the whole point of view, this would not even, this would not even been made aware, but I was made, or I would have probably trusted at that time, for every department. So it's nothing against police or fire, if they did a good job, whatever, but in all the fairness and the whole issue, I think it should be all on the same page. That's one man's opinion.
Yeah. If I can understand what you're saying, I would respectfully disagree.
If I may, yes, sir, I'm aware of another department that compensates their employees at a higher rate, just because of the higher rate of insurance that they have to pay. And that's Nelson County Sheriff's Office. Their, as we spoke three months ago, their pay rate is much higher than my officer's pay rate. I have officers that have gone over to Nelson County, but their insurance rate compensates for the higher, their pay rate compensates for the higher rate of insurance that they're paying. And I agree with the chief. If, if we raise this insurance rate on some of our employees that do hazardous duty, we might have some people walk, and I'd hate to see that happen with all the time, money and training that we put our people through. We're, we're getting to be more and more professional, both in fire and police as we move forward, and if you want to raise that...
And if you want to raise that, that insurance rate on the officers or the firefighters, I would suggest that we compensate them a higher hourly wage.
Have you, as far as the other departments you've served in, have, did they have a different rate though with, between police officers and the other?
In the departments I've served in, the fire department and police departments had the same rate. As far as the other city employees, we're going back to several years, they were about the same, but the city back then paid for the vast majority of the health care. Now that health care has risen up over the last, what, five years? The cities and the municipalities are having to compensate their budgets by charging the employees more.
That's what started this whole discussion.
Yes, sir.
We used to cover all employees and all their insurance, it just got to be two, two months of expense now. There are some other, some other benefits though, even with the higher rate of pay, I agree, I think you can speak to that. Savings to come with not having to pay deductibles on a higher insurance plan, all of them pay co-ages. It's a very, very, very good plan that we do offer, even at the rate of 300. Mayor, would you just speak to that for a second?
Yeah, we have, I think have reported in the past, since we've been self-insured, the city's done quite well in terms of the quality of the benefits of our plan versus how much we pay per employee per month or per year for health insurance. And we've made a lot of, been able to make a lot of changes in the, in the drug plan, for instance, where we would exclude some of the more expensive drugs that have an equivalent. So instead of just having to pay more for the name brand drug, we just don't cover it at all. We also excluded one of the pharmacies that had higher rates. So these are the sorts of individual things we can do, but probably what's made the biggest difference for us this, this past year or so is going to a system called reference-based pricing, where instead of having, being in a network and paying deductibles and co-insurance, which you're probably mostly familiar with, where you have a deductible, say 1,000, 2,000, or even more for a family, and then co-insurance, 20% or 10%, up to a maximum amount of pocket. Instead of that, the, we have a system where we have a company that negotiates with all the providers at a percent above Medicare, and then they give us a discount. And that ends up being a discount that's way more than, than we would have had, you know, with, with one of the networks. And so that has saved us a considerable amount in our claims this year compared to what they would have been if those things had been handled in the network. So our, our prices, our costs, our claims cost is pretty much level, but it would have been considerably higher if we were in a network, and higher yet if we were fully insured with one of the big insurance companies where they take a profit on top of all that. So the net result is that for the, for the money that the employees pay, which even at 100 and 300, that's a pretty small percentage of the probably 600 and 1,400 dollars a month that it costs. So that's a small percentage, but the value of what they get for it and how much they have to pay out of pocket once they pour our plan is, is an even bigger saving. So we're kind of proud of the way the council and the mayors over the last 10 years or so have, have taken advantage of self-funding and some of the creative plans that our brokers have suggested to us.
For instance, Del and PD, they're under contract, so therefore their insurance for their police officers are quite a bit cheaper. However, when the contract is up, their insurance is going up for the newer guys. That's why usually it's different across the cities and counties in Kentucky, because most of those have FOP who are in charge of making contracts with the city. But as far as the firemen, the 2448 guys start out at around 30,000 a year, which is less than most of the CSR in the public works.
One thing I noted, both chiefs said, I talked about the budget is, you know, I look back seven years from when I, in my last budget is previous time I was mayor, and, you know, police budget has gone up by a million dollars a year in that seven-year time period, and the fire department has gone up by 2.3 million dollars a year. That's a pretty substantial increase, probably a larger increase than some of the other departments. Now, there's some reasons behind that. We've gone from, to a full-time department with fire from nine, full-time to 17 and so forth, but that's a 16 and a half percent increase per year on average for that seven years. It's a pretty sizable increase. So, as we look at this, you know, we're looking for ways we can try to, try to save some money, but we feel like we're also being generous as we can with allocations for all the other expenses. But we haven't made our mind up on this insurance issue at this point. But it was very surprising to me when I got handed this budget three days after I was appointed. Tracy was only too eager to lay this on me. And I immediately pulled my last budget out, and I was somewhat surprised, it'd be the nicest thing I could say, that this budget has grown by 15 million dollars annually in seven years. Now, not all that is operationally and so forth. A lot of that has to do with revenue that's basically in and out revenue based on utilities, like electric, cable, internet for the most part. But operationally, it's still over 30 million dollars. So that's a huge, huge budget available. So we've got to scrutinize these expenses, revenue strains, and wages and so forth, and we're going to be doing this, doing this work. So, any other questions on fire? I know we've got a side fact there on insurance, and any other questions on the other items? All right. I think we're down to the Quebec building, and for those that don't know the acronym of what that means, that's the City of Orange County Education Center. This is what Quebec stands for. I think the main issue there is we have to repair the AC unit, and we have a handicap ramp that has to be constructed.
Yes, sir. That 158,000 is for, we need to shake two bids to replace the HVAC system on it. And currently, we are not ADA compliant. The ramp, where it's a, it's a lift actually, does not work. We've received several complaints and even one letter, because we have a letter from a resident at the end of last year's basketball season about not being ADA compliant. And the rest of that 58,000 is for the, the building of an outside ramp. It's going to be a wooden ramp that runs the length of the building and then comes back, and then they'll have to tear out a wall and add a door so that people can just go up the ramp now. We've tried looking at all kinds of ways, from replacing the lift in there, to an outside elevator, to all different kinds of ways. But the only, all the other ways, you have, they have to be manned. The elevator will take you to the third, the second floor, and you can't get to the second floor unless you've got a key, because it's a head start. And for security purposes, you have to have a key to get to the head start. So that has to be a recreation person manes the elevator every time there's an event, and then takes them over to the lift, and it gets to be quite a, quite a hassle. It's just easier just to have them build a ramp where residents can just walk up the ramp and then the door. And the only recreational people would have to be at that door to whatever they do, take one or two. And then the other, the major part of that 158 is the replacement of the HVAC system, which I talked to the finance committee about to get those bids.
So you say you've got some bids in?
Yes, sir. We got two bids in, one from Brown's Heating and Air, and then the other from Johnson Control out of Lowell. Brown's Heating and Air was 18362, and Johnson Control was 121895. And we obviously are going to go with the Johnson Control bid on that.
The last, the senior?
That replaces the compressor that's outside, the air handling unit and the compressor on the outside, and the chiller barrel that's on the inside. Right now, the system is raw, thragging off of one compressor, and it's the old coolant that's longer available. The new system will be one contained unit that's on the outside with the new R4, I forget, I forget the name of the coolant, but it's the newer type coolant that everyone on the outside. Yes, sir.
Did we originally think that might only be 100,000?
It was 100, I thought it'd be 100,000. I was estimating it around 100,000, and it actually came in at 120,000.
We need to reset the budget here.
Does that come with any, any warranties?
It comes with the...
Any differences in the two contracts and any type of warranties?
Yes, sir. It comes with the one-year, you know, they'll come out and do all the work and stuff for it, and then a five-year warranty after that for parts.
They're pretty much the same with the two bids?
The warranties were, actually Johnson Control's warranty was a little better.
Okay.
Than Brown's.
So this is where you take the land acquisition fund also?
Yes, sir, land acquisition.
And we would probably try to set up some payback.
To the land acquisition?
Because probably the grant factors next fiscal year, like team, try to take that back over time. It's kind of like a loan. Grant, so did you know, you said, is the 158 not going to be a good number then for the air conditioning and the ramp?
No, it's going to be increased by 21,895.
Okay. So, that's what you were referring to while...
Yeah, the ramp's 58, I know we talked about 100 on the other.
We're going to take, you're still taking money out of the land acquisition fund.
That's correct.
Yes.
Transfer, transfer down.
May I ask a question? How, this is a little bit off, not off, so how do we get money into the land acquisition fund? How does that money get in there? Where's it coming?
It just comes from the general fund. That was, my assumption would be that Mike would yearly put so much in there. The only people that can use the land acquisition, land acquisition fund are the general fund departments and not the utilities. So we keep about 500,000 in there for these types of things, and then once they use it, they have to start repaying it back yearly to go to that.
That's why I tried to grab words.
Well, it comes from a property, like we sold that hunk of land to Kroger for 374,000. And then, of course, we built, we built the farmer's market building, we spent right at 200,000 right after we got the 374. But anytime that anyone takes some money out of the land acquisition fund, like we're doing now, they set up payments or X amount of dollars and put it back into it. Or say, like he takes 175,000 out of this land acquisition fund now, in their budgets in the next four or five years, you can put X amount of dollars, set up in the budget to pay back some of it, or in case of another department needs.
I noticed almost all, all things we've discussed later, everybody's taking the hunk of money out of the land acquisition fund.
But there was, there should have been a hunk of money in there.
There is.
Yeah, but they, they eventually...
My concern was, how does it get replenished? That's what I had.
Because they set up in the budget for upcoming years to pay it back. So that's, so probably next year, if this Quebec building, the last payment's paid back. I mean, that's still a big shit, my credit.
So how do they go about paying, how's Quebec go about paying back in there? We don't even take enough money down off that payment.
Look, according to here, they're 12,000 so good. If they didn't, if this chiller bank, that's better.
Well, that's offset by 158 transfer, or if it's 12,000, I don't know if they did that or not.
Well, it really, it comes down to accounting. You have to, whenever a department uses it, uses it, has to pay it back, but you have to look at the general fund as a whole. So they, each department's going to support it, so it's basically going to come from the help of the finance department, collective property tax, and occupational tax, and just the whole.
Well, it's like with, like with Kroger.
Well, if you pay it back early.
Yeah, but it's got to go back through the Quebec, and we're shown that they pay it back.
Well, see, they've got rent coming in.
Yeah, it may be deficient, I'm not saying, but when you start keeping it counting, and the fund was named Land Acquisition and Building Restoration Fund, and so when you have, you have this expense, it's a basis on to raise your ramp. And then that, that should be an income.
Well, just like the Quebec building for itself, if it, if it, if it took in 100,000 and you paid out 100,000, lots of covers expenses, it doesn't make any difference.
But if there are 150,000 obstacles, fix a roof, they need to make more money to put that money back.
Well, just like Tracy said, some of it's coming out of the, some of it's, it's the same, if they, if they didn't do expenses and they netted 12,000. Well, because it is a government bid like that, if they paid the 12,000 back to the land acquisition fund, it still wouldn't make any difference.
Their source of revenues, you all, it would be a line item in the budget next year, so their budget would be 12,000 more or whatever, and that 12,000 would go into the land acquisition fund by now. Is that correct? I mean, if you get...
Yeah, if the Quebec building just broke even, zero, if they added any money back over, then you could put it back in the acquisition. And like here, for example, if it was 12,000 so good, that 12,000, you go back to the land acquisition fund. So this is, this is the city building.
And as we get our all equipment, see what kind of surplus it presents, I think we can, I mean, if there are amendments, we'll announce when we put some money back in at that time.
Right.
If everybody works out right.
I guess I, I own property, so I'd like to see a little bit of money there, and I just want to make sure that it's going to be built up, it's coming down big, I just want to make sure it was going to still be there. We need it next year or the year after.
That's, everybody, every department that takes it out of the acquisition fund, sets up the budget for next year to start paying it back. That's why, that's why it stays.
It's self-funding smaller expenses, basically.
Yeah. If you need to, if you need a roof on a building, or you need a roof for the rec center, or whatever situation, if they don't have their budget set up, they can borrow from the land acquisition fund, and it'll pay it back.
I guess to put it simply, all right, if we take 300, 400,000 out of the land acquisition fund this year, are we going to be able to put it back out of the general fund money we have? Are we going to be able to put that much money back into that fund?
We don't have to put it all back in one place.
But my point was, what if we need that much again next year and it's not there?
Well, you're not going to replace the work next year or the air conditioner.
Well, but it might be another replace, Larry. I'm not talking on the Quebec particularly.
Well, just the master of that project should stand on its own for the best it can. Our partners are like, what, Kroger than we are? The federal state don't seem to be wanting to grant much these days. So, but it should stand on its own, and it should pay the rent back, or, you know, it should stand on its own to keep. If it can't, then that obviously is your office place to take it out of the general fund.
May I hear what you're talking about, a little lack of, Tracy, to give us a firm number of what the total deduction of land acquisition is going to be for this year and what the balance would be before we went on this budget. Good news, though, because most of you know, the general fund's not relied on any dividends from the utility department this year. So that really helps us, of course, that's for another day, and that discussion...
Any indirect expenses have been reduced.
And indirect, I guess, have been...
Allocation, I guess, not expensive, but allocation.
Very well.
So that's, that's been a big savings for the general fund as a whole. All right, we'll get the coast to be finished with this. Any other questions on Quebec? Go to the finance department. Any questions on that? I had asked a question about the 4210 under business and liquor license, and we obviously overestimated what the revenue was going to be for this budget year that we're finishing. So we changed that, we reduced that down to 30 for next year, which is more of an accurate line item for business and liquor license that we will collect. line item for business and liquor license that we will collect. And then the $36,000 under 4130 in payment in lieu of taxes, Tracy, you want to explain that has to do with the housing authority patents to the city?
Yeah, it has to do with the housing authority, and they are tax-exempt, but we get a percentage of the money that they get in, either by rent or from the state. We get a percentage every year. Because what I understood, it's city-owned.
Only 130 on revenue at the top, 130 on front of the town, so it's going to go up. Tracy, you wanted to talk about the 7220, that software, if you didn't purchase it this year, we're going to carry over that same line item for this coming year.
Yeah, we've been late about five years on the upgrade. We were part of the beta program, there was four cities. The other three cities have gone live, whereas we're more complicated, because we have all services. The software company we currently use, I've never seen anything like it. The city doesn't have to own all those. So it's pretty much just a carryover for the last four or five years.
Maybe it is kind of integrate, you know, in our community, mainly with the utility departments.
Right.
We have a much larger utility department than most cities with electric, cable, internet, sewer, water. Most cities basically are in the water business, and that's about it. So that's why ours is a bit more complicated than a typical city to get this integration going. But I think you said the beta test is due to expire, we'll have to bite the bullet.
Well, I mean, it's not ready for the cable part. They've had a lot of trouble with, because we mill in a different system for cable and internet, so that has to be transferred, so transferred over to the current utility software. So that part, they've been having a lot of trouble bridging that, but I'm hoping this year will be the year that we'll finally have it. And it's web-based, whereas now it's, it's, not DOS, but, well, it's hardcoded, so maybe it is equal to DOS.
The billing expense for all bills?
Excuse me?
Billing expense, is that all of you? Is there property tax?
Billing expense is, we pay the PVA $40,000 a year to put our PO together. Anytime we have to file liens for unpaid property taxes, and once those taxes are paid, then we release those liens.
So it's just property tax?
Pretty much, yes.
Then I figure you did have one CSR position, do you want to talk to that as compared with the number of part-times we currently have?
I currently have five authorized full-time CSRs. I would like to add an additional full-time CSR. Now that the, we just have the drive-through window, no longer the payment center where all the part-time CSRs were, they're all over in the main lobby of city hall, I'm sure you've seen them. So they have to deal with all the utilities, connects, vendors, transfers, they've taken on other brands with the engineering department. And so I would like to reduce my part-time people by one, my full-time staff, I would like to increase it by one, full-time authorized.
A few years ago, if you remember, we had a payment department itself, and you had a CSR department that was for changes, that were requesting new accounts and so forth. So now that's all been moved back over to the main lobby area. So they handle both now. It used to be one only handled payments, one only handled new accounts and changes. Now that's been streamlined, where they all handle those requests. Of course, as our business grows, you know, the number of internet cable customers we have, and of course, water and sewer, that's continued to grow. The demand on them, both by phone, as well as by walk-up, business is, just continues to increase, so it's much higher demand on their time and services and having enough people available to handle that call volume and that walking volume.
Yeah, we get about 50,000 calls in a six-month period. And I also have the receptionist presentation, also part of my staff. But we're also going to go to four cycles instead of two billing cycles, so payments will constantly come in every week, along with their usual connects and disconnects and transfers of services.
There's a huge volume of traffic coming in, both over the phone and the house. I think with the reduction of the one part-time, you obviously have a net increase, but I think it's still not close to what you, you know, say that we have up there. You want, you know, respond to these calls as fast as you can, because any of us know, when they call in and they've got problems, they don't want to be put on hold, they want callbacks, you know, it's customer service business we're in. So we need to, I think that position is needed, to help us better serve that base of customers. Any other questions on the finance department?
I have one, Mayor. I may, Tracy, 4200 to 4.4 million occupational license fee, where does that number, where does that number come from? And the second part of my question would be, I guess, basically, how is it calculated for occupational taxes for businesses or the net profit tax? How is it calculated?
It's the same percentage, it's all lumped into 4200, the net profits and the wages. This number is based on all the wages and profits that we calculate throughout the year. When I did the amended, I added a million dollar to what I originally budgeted for last year, which was 2.2 million dollars. So I added 800,000 to be conservative. So we're actually doubling that for the coming year with a 1% increase.
Okay, so are we still basically on like an honor statement with the occupational fee for businesses? And I mean, that net profit tax, is that kind of?
Well, they have to send in their K1, with their form showing what they made.
Another thing on this statement is this represents a full 12-month period of the current rate. Of course, the past budget was only half a year, correct?
Correct.
So I just went in, I guess, January 1 of this year, where the cap was removed. So this coming budget reflects a full 12-month collection. Any other questions on the finance?
One quick one. You said you're going to quarter, about four times a month on the bill?
Four cycles instead of two.
And when will they hit? What day of the month?
We're going to build first, 7th, 14th, and 21st, and then they'll leave it 20 days after the first day.
I guess that's all you've spread.
Right. You would believe how many people move every month. Change in that side was amazing.
Okay, any other questions? Everybody had enough on? You have this? There's no other questions then, if there's anything else, I move for adjournments, most adjournments.
So move.
Councilman Williams, to the section.
Certainly.
Councilman Kelly, on the cover.
Aye.
Close. So, thank you all.